Meeting to order, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And nobody on either one. Okay. Oh, okay, thank you. All right. Okay, we're at the citizen comment period, and we have two sign up. Ms. Simpson is number one signee. Could you pull that down?
Hello, better?
Perfect, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Linda Simpson. I live in Bremerton at 2128 Snyder Avenue. And I was asked to look into the Cedar Cove Association. So my letter reads, as I begin, "I would like to remind everyone of the value of accountability and transparency. As Councilwoman Lucarelli stated at a November 214 council meeting, 'It's called transparency,' she said. 'I've got questions that aren't being answered. I'd like to know more about the process. The citizens want to know more.' Kitsap Sound, 19 November 2014. We have submitted five and a half pages of questions to the CCA and are awaiting answers. Here's a brief report concerning our research. There are nine sections. I'm going to cover just the city of Port Orchard, as that's relevant to you. Cedar Cove Association reported to the IRS in their application for 501(c)(3) nonprofit status Form 1023, Part IV, narrative description of your activities. Quote, "The Cedar Cove Association is organized exclusively for charitable and educational purposes, including, for such purposes, the making of distributions to organizations that qualify as exempt organizations under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code or the corresponding section of any future code." As reported to the Secretary of State's office, quote, "Cedar Cove Association purpose is the promoting and sponsoring of events and activities to benefit the community through the advancement of literacy, education, and economic vitality." Note, CCA was denied 501(c)(3) status and was granted 501(c)(4) status on April 24, 2009. Note, CCA has held only one event in 2009 Cedar Cove Days. The overview of CCA is as follows. The executive director is Ms. Cindy Lucarelli. The assistant executive director is Mr. Gerald Childs. The association is located at 926 Kitsap Street, Port Orchard, Washington 98366. This happens to be the personal residence of the executive director. Total revenue, 2,008 to 1,251,770. Total expenses, 2,008 to 1,293,553. Total grants awarded, 19,400. Note, the CCA website donates to local nonprofits, has a total of 20,990, which doesn't match with the figures reported to the IRS. Amount donated to the advancement of literacy, 7,250. This is 7.7 percent of total expenses. Amount paid for occupancy, rent, utilities, and maintenance, 16,578. This is 17.7 percent of total expenses. Note, as to occupancy. In 2008, it was 553, 2,009, 812, the year of the one and only event. 2010, $7,937. 2011, 3,858. 2012, 3,418. Total monetary assets at the end of 2013, $57,656. So my three minutes is up, but I have all of the rest of my documents to give to the city and all of the corresponding documents as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next person that signed up, Ms. Rossworn.
My name is Jackie Rossworn. I am the executive director for Kitsap Alliance of Property Owners. We have been very involved in the building of Puget Sound Regional Council and very well of everything KRCC does. Now, Bremerton has stepped aside from the KRCC. I suggest to you, it's a good opportunity and a good time for you to step aside from KRCC. KRCC, who is part of the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, is minus one of its members so far. Bremerton City Council has voted unanimously to leave KRCC over policy disputes. Many of the disputes have been ongoing throughout the years. One is the feeling of disrespect and lack of leadership of the electeds to listen to the people they represent. The lack of response from the electeds to calls, emails, questions seems to be at the heart of the problem. KRCC voting structure now gives added weight to the Kitsap County Commissioners, who have to have two votes for yes for the policy decisions to be approved, rather than a simple count of the attending members. There is also a possible fee increase for members to hire more staff. And that does not sit well with some members. Also, Bremerton will have to lobby for project money by themselves from the legislature and from Puget Sound Regional Council, who distributes money for King Pierce, Snowish, and Kitsap. But Bremerton has an option to partner with West Sound Counties and cities that have more in common with each other than Seattle, Tacoma, and Bellevue. And I think you guys are getting kind of on the low totem pole, as far as getting any money. We have very little voice, you have very little voice in comparison with them. Another problem is KRCC forcing smart growth onto the member cities in Kitsap County. Our Kitsap County Commissioners, Charlotte and Rob Grito, are advocates for smart growth policies and are instilling those policies in Kitsap County rural areas, that's where I live, with no outreach information shared with the public. Their draft document can be found, which is in this letter that anybody can look at. There are more questionable actions being imposed upon the general public than in this short review. The public needs to be more attuned to their electeds and understand what their real goals in public office are, and not whether they are a Democrat or a Republican. What is important to you? This is big business, and I would like to see something happen here. I would like to see Port Orchard depart KRCC. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's, everyone that signed up, we still offer, yes sir, in the back, please come up. I was just going to tell the rest of you, it's all right if you didn't sign up, raise your hand. If you thought of something you'd like to say to the council, you'll be recognized and able to come up here. Yes, sir?
Good evening, City Council, Robert Parker. I live just out of the city limits, so that you understand that I'm inside the city limits. I do a whole lot of work in Bremerton, and it just kind of struck a note with me when we talked about KRCC. And I would think that you would probably want to order the audio from the study session on 5/13/2015, because the, from the city of Bremerton, because the discussions that I've heard here, and I've listened to them over and over and over. I've listened to the last year of KRCC stuff, and it appears, between them and you guys, nobody's understanding where Bremerton really is. And I think in one meeting, sitting down with a one hour, listening to an audio, it'll bring it crystal clear. They're talking about agendas that have been changed, where they wanted something moved up the agenda. It didn't get to it in that month. It got kicked down to the next month, but it appears on the agenda again at the bottom, not up at the top. So some of the things they wanted to talk to people at KRCC weren't making their way up. And they have some other complaints, and some, their biggest issues, I think, are against the commissioners and the voting structures. But I think, so that you all understand it, you should listen to the study group of their discussions. They were very specific. I don't believe they've been very, very specific in the public meetings that I viewed of the Kitsap Regional Council, but they were very, very specific there. And their complaints, I believe, are valid. And I think there are some complaints that should come from the city of Port Orchard also. And I think once you start viewing that, it'll bring some things to your mind that you should consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Vote 243 Tremont Place. Good evening. Well, I'm wondering why we don't have a code of ethics. We've been asking that forever. I know a couple of you on that board are for it. Why we cannot have that? I think it's very important to have it. We just heard it. And I'm looking now, well, you all now are using City Hall. Thank you very much. It looks like some of you are for election, and they remember that we have a City Hall and that the breakfast at the Pancake House is over. There is something else. I'd like to know now, what is the procedure for us to be listened to? We have the light, which we were against, and I sent a letter to the city at one moment, because we were outside the country, and it was not read. I'd like to know why. What is the procedure that now you invented to shut us down? This is very difficult. You're working for us. And it would be great if you were listening to us and doing what we, the people, want, including having the first amendment of the Washington Constitution on the wall. I've been asking that forever. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir? If you, if you'd give them to our clerk, she'll pass them out. Thank you. Restart his clock for him, so. Hang on just a minute, and we'll start over here.
Okay.
There we go. All right.
So the piece of paper that I've given you is, it's already came up front of you with the county to change this section of land. If you go look on page two, the area that's outlined in the pink borders the Port Orchard Industrial Park, runs down Cook Road, and then up to Hanson. That property there, that we're asking to be brought into the city, will allow us then to hook up to the sewer. The city of Bremerton will give a sewer if we come into the city of Port Orchard. That property is all views of Puget Sound and the Olympic Mountains. It's prime, it's prime area, when people are coming down the freeway, heading towards Gors, they look across, it's going to make it look like Port Orchard's no longer podunk, because we can put some substantial buildings there and add that into it to make it look like there's something there and clean it up. All you guys need to do is bring us in, and we can do this.
Could you say your name again?
What's that?
Could you introduce yourself and say your name again?
My name is Nick Penovich.
Thank you.
So if you were to drive up Anderson Hill Road, and you'd see a sign there that said, "Nasty Nix Pork Butts Free Range Pig Farm," that's kind of the area we're talking about. Because I first originally tried to hook up to the sewer, and I was told I couldn't because it's urban reserve, not urban grow. And they would not allow me to hook to the sewer, and told me that it had to be farmland, which, same kind of irony, put farmland in there to run into the creek and also into Puget Sound. So with the bureaucrat that I ran into, I figured, well, heck, I'll put a sign up to see what happens. And I had a sign made that said, "The Nasty Nix Pork Butts." And I put that in on a Friday, and on Tuesday, I got a call from the county asking me what the heck I thought I was doing. I said, "Well, you guys told me it was farmland." And I was told I could raise 10 pigs the acre, so I got 12 acres there. I'm going to do 120 pigs. Next to me, my partner, he's got another eight acres, so that gives us 20 acres of pigs. I mean, I don't want to raise pigs there. I'd rather be part of Port Orchard and build something nice.
Okay. Have you, have you started the process? Have you talked to Mr. Bond?
Yeah, you guys have already been given to you already once. I'm just coming here asking why. Why did you turn it down? I mean, you're, a city tries to grow and become sustainable, correct? So all of a sudden, somebody wants to join you and has land there, and we can all of a sudden have full utilities there, and you say, "We don't want you?" That's the thing that I don't understand, and that's why I'm here asking that. I mean, that property would be great with multi-family, you know, condos, something like that, looking in, or tie it into the industrial park. We're building a lot of houses. On my road further up, they're putting 300 houses in. These people mostly that are buying them now that I was up there talking are in the service. Service all of a sudden needs to become some manufacturing and different types of business? I just think you guys are passing up an opportunity to tie into it. I was told that it was, we had to get all of Anderson Hill Road or nothing.
Well, there is a process. There is a, you know, a process where assessed value has to be a certain percentage of the assessed value of the area that wants to be annexed. And there's a whole process, but Mr. Bond can help you figure out if the process works for you.
I can fill you in a little bit if you like.
Okay, yes.
He did file an application to be added to the urban growth area to the county. It was one of the three proposals that we brought forward to work-study in April. And that area, because it was, you know, it was 14 or 16 lots, I believe, and it was sort of an irregular boundary, the council discussed it, looked at the costs of the roads in the area, potentially if those came with any UGA expansion, and said that really, if we want to do this, we want to look at the whole thing or nothing at all. And so the county sent him a letter saying that they were not going to consider his application. And he's asking for, I guess, the city to reconsider its position, to get the county to actually take a look at this. I think that summarizes it.
Right, well, I mean, it does. But you're catching, it's more than just a few lots there. The total land is about 50 acres that you'd be bringing in. So it's not like, and if you want to take the rest of it up the hill, you know, that's county land. Or across the street is the city. That's Bremerton's land. So I guess that your portion would be just a small portion of Anderson Hill that you'd annex in. The rest of it, you already have down Cook Road, is industrial. You'll see right there where it says, "Port Orchard," right next to Highway 16. It's just going to bring you to the next part of that. In the front there, you've got, most of that is Port Orchard, right in front of it, on the top page. Look at what, so you're not adding that much more as far as rug frontage that you have on Anderson Hill Road. You're just making the block more evened out. Thinking, you know, business is business, and you guys are leaving nickels on the table, leaving dollars on the table and trying to grab nickels.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on then. We are at the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments to the published agenda? Well, let's see. Let's have a motion first. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to add business item, would be 7F, to discuss usage of our wayfinding mark.
7F, discuss wayfinding. Any other?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Any other discussion or comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. We have an amended agenda. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any amendments to the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published. Is there any other comments, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're at presentations, and I would like to ask if Mr. Hershey is here in the audience. I see you have some guests with you. Would you, would you, all three come up, please? Thank you. Please introduce yourselves.
I'm Marion Mick Hershey. I'm the flag chairman of the Sons of the American Revolution, our local chapter, John Paul Jones. And we have our president of the chapter, Conrad Piler, and, excuse me, the vice president, David Blivens, here.
Very good. Welcome. Now, I do have a proclamation. I would be happy to read it, or would you like to read it?
I can read it, sir.
I will read it then. Thank you. Whereas the Continental Congress of the United States on June 14, 1777, adopted the first official flag of the United States, and whereas the Congress of the United States on August 3, 1949 officially designated June 14 of each year as National Flag Day, and whereas the Congress of the United States on June 20, 1965, adopted a joint resolution approved by the President to recognize a pause for the Pledge of Allegiance as part of National Flag Day ceremonies, and urged all Americans to participate, and whereas the John Paul Jones Chapter of the Washington State Society of the Sons of American Revolution reminds us of the importance of National Flag Day, and whereas the city of Port Orchard has always been proud of our national flag and what it symbolizes, knowing that it stands for the best that mankind has ever sought to achieve in the history of this world. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Timothy C. Mathis, mayor of the city of Port Orchard, do hereby proclaim Sunday, June 14, 2015, as National Flag Day in the city of Port Orchard, and call upon all citizens to share actively in this commemoration joint, or commemoration joint in common declaration of faith, represented in the words of the Pledge of Allegiance, to observe this day with appropriate recognition thereof. And I sign this on the ninth day of June 2015.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to public hearings, and we do have a couple of public hearings. So we'll start with a, public hearing on six-year transportation improvement program annual update. Mr. Dorsey, will you lead us into this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. There's a, there's a section on background that the city attorneys provided. That's for the record. I won't read that into the record unless you wish. But I will start with the summary. Based on Washington State Department of Transportation requirements, cities are required to submit their six-year transportation improvement plan, or TIP, annually. Attached is a copy of the city's TIP, which covers the years 2016 through 2021.
I think you're...
Torment me. This document must be realistic based on the city's budget. The city has created a two-tier system for the TIP, in which the first tier will be submitted, and the second tier would be an in-house project list. The city has transportation needs that include up its street pedestrian facilities and providing maintenance activities on its streets and sidewalks. Federal and state funding, for the most part, is available on a very competitive basis. The city has to look at innovative ways of funding transportation shortfalls, such as forming local improvement districts, or LIDs, by which residents agree to tax themselves to do these improvements, or transportation benefit districts, TBDs. More discussion on this issue will be part of the city's upcoming budget preparation. Staff recommends opening the public hearing for the city's six-year transportation improvement program.
Thank you. I will officially open the public hearing. No one has signed up to testify. However, I will again ask you to raise your hand if you would like to address the council. Yes, sir. Would you please come up and give us your comments?
On the issue of, we're talking about the six-year transportation issue. My name's Nick Gorley, by the way, resident of Port Orchard. I'm new to this process, and, but I believe in being an involved citizen, and recently have attended some briefings on the Tacoma Narrows Bridge. And this is something that I feel is very important to me, that I'm not understanding as a citizen, how we're taxing ourselves to pay for fixing roads. If I'm wrong, we all pay registration on our vehicles. And last time I checked, I thought that registration was go to pay for our roads. As a motorcycle rider, and a resident of Port Orchard for the past eight years, I know that I have traveled up, oh, Clifton Road, or, I'm sorry, what's the other, Tremont. And the duration of here, these little squiggly lines in the road, they're called asphalt snakes, as we, motorcycle riders like to call them, for that duration. So my question would be, is, when do these roads get updated? And what am I paying my registration on my vehicles for? And why is that money from the Department of Licensing not going to sustain our roads? So we're going to add a cost to the taxpayers and tax ourselves, again, to pay for things that, my understanding, again, correct me if I'm wrong, should already be being covered by what we pay as citizens. So we're looking for other ways to pay for the roads that are deteriorating, and I'm at a loss as to understanding why we're not taking care of the roads. Side step, when I first moved to Port Orchard, I witnessed a motorcycle rider in front of me, and this was about November, on a wet road, on that same wet road, actually go down and came within inches of actually hitting him. I had a safe speed, safe distance, but as a motorcycle myself, riding, witnessed this and thinking, okay, when are we going to fix these roads? So that would be my question, is why are we going to tax ourselves to pay for something that should already be funded?
Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Could you address that?
You could address that. I don't believe, I mean, I believe prior to the Iman initiative that MBAT was going to fund the roads and the ferries, but that was the Iman initiative that gutted that, that...
That, that's correct. And then the real answer is that it's a motor vehicle fuel tax that is actually the... And then the real answer is that it's a motor vehicle fuel tax that is actually the method that the state raises revenue to work on the roadways. It's not the motor, not the vehicle license tab, as you point out.
Correct, and we get little or none of that money that the state collects from the gas tax.
Off the top of my head, about a hundred and, total about $180,000 total.
Yeah.
But I'd have to, you know, if you wanted to call, I could get the exact number.
Yeah, if you could give us a contact email or a phone number and give it to the clerk, we'll try to get you some answers. And I don't know if you'll agree with him, but we'll try to get you some, some answers to some of those questions at least.
Okay, I would appreciate that. And again, the fuel tax and...
Right.
Citizen looking at all these...
Well, yeah, and we're going to be talking about this for, for the next few meetings, so it'd be a good idea to answer some of your questions, so you'll, you'll understand where we're going and why we're going that direction, so.
Sure, and then which, your, your response to that, and makes me ask the other question, well, what is my registration going to pay for? Is that just for administrative overhead? Because, not to sidebar too much, but I've seen, I've seen some of the, I've done some research and seen what a driver's license administrator makes on an annual basis. Just to kind of throw that out, I haven't done full research. I work a full day, as everyone else does, and my infancy steps of doing this research and voicing my opinion, I'm concerned then, where am I, where's my money going for my vehicles that I'm paying?
I wish that money was coming directly to the city of Port Orchard, but we don't collect it. It goes to the state.
To which the state then should divvy out proportionally to the areas.
We wouldn't disagree with you.
But we want to talk. You know, I, I'm sure that we can get you some answers, you know, or at least explain, you know, how, how roads in the city of Port Orchard are being maintained or not maintained, and why. So I'd like to get an opportunity, so if you do leave a contact, we'll, we'll try to get in touch with you.
I absolutely will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then I will close the public hearing on a six-year transportation improvement program. Okay. Now, there's no action to be taking on, taken on this tonight. We'll be taking action later when we do, but you will have an opportunity to look at that and make, you know, comments on, on the six-year tip. All right, we're in, we're going, public hearing 6B, surplus of water sewer utility, stormwater drainage, utility equipment. Mr. Martin, could you lead us into this one, please?
Thank you, Mayor Mathis, members of the city council, citizens of Port Orchard. State statute requires that a public hearing be conducted when property of a public utility is declared surplus. The equipment described on the attachment attached to this agenda report is 2015 surplus for proprietary funds, no longer serves a purpose for utility needs, and as such, it is requested that the council declare it surplus. The resolution declaring certain property surplus combines the items listed in the 2015 surplus for proprietary funds, which requires a public hearing, with general fund surplus property described in the attachment 2015 surplus general government, which does not require a public hearing, and you'll be asked to act upon that shortly. So the staff recommendation, recommendation is to open the public hearing to take public comment, then close the public meeting and proceed to the next step, which is declaring the property surplus and to be disposed of in the best interest of the city, and this equipment is obsolete, broken, destroyed, or otherwise not compatible with the current software packages and equipment of the city.
Okay, thank you. I will... Comments? I will hereby open the public hearing, and no one has signed up, but I once again ask you to raise your hand to be identified and come up if you have a comment for the council. No comments. One last chance, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to business item 7A, adoption of resolution declaring certain general government personal property and water sewer utility and storm drainage utility equipment as surplus. Mr. Martin? I'll impress you into service again to...
Thank you. Well, you might remember earlier this evening we met and declared certain property surplus in the utility fund. We now ask that assets to the city that are no longer usable or are no longer of value to the city or are surplus to the city needs may be removed from city ownership, sold, or in any other way disposed of with a declaration of surplus by the city council. Attachment 2015 surplus for general government lists those items no longer needed for general government purposes and may be declared surplus. State statute requires a public hearing prior to disposal of the equipment owned by a utility. A public hearing was previously held for the disposition of water sewer utility and storm drainage utility property. Those items are listed in the attachment 2015 surplus for proprietary funds. Money from the sale of surplus property is deposited into the fund which owned the equipment. When disposal is to the general public through direct sale, sealed bid, or auction, final determination of value shall be to the highest responsible bid or offer. The city may transfer a surplus asset to another public agency upon written request and a determination that is, that it is in the public interest to do so. Recommendation, staff recommends approval of the resolution declaring certain general government and proprietary property surplus and allowing for its disposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Childs had his hand up, and then...
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution declaring certain general government personal property and water sewer utility and storm drainage utility equipment as surplus and authorizing the disposition thereof.
Second?
Motion and second. Discussion or comments? Seeing no discussion or comment, we're going to be adopting this resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? That motion is adopted. Thank you. All right, we're at item 7B, adoption of ordinance adopting a franchise agreement with waste management services for solid waste services. Clerk Ranerson, would you tell us about this one, please?
I'm going to tell it, tell you about it tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
On July 1, 2005, the city entered into a five-year franchise agreement with waste management and allowed the part, which allowed the parties to extend the agreement twice, the first extension for three years and the second for two years for solid waste services. The franchise expires on June 30th, 2015. Waste Management sent the city a draft agreement to consider. This new franchise agreement is proposed for a period of five years and allows the parties to extend the agreement twice, the first extension for three years and the second for two years. Over the last few months, staff has negotiated changes with Waste Management staff to the agreement. On May 26, 2015, a public hearing was held to address any concerns from the public regarding the current level of service. One citizen addressed the council expressing the need to include plastic fruit containers as part of the recycling program. The proposed franchise agreement is submitted in the materials for council consideration. This represents the last round of negotiations between city staff and Waste Management. In the agenda bill, it states that there would be a city attorney memo provided prior to the hearing. The issues in that memo have been resolved with the exception of one, and the remaining issue is section 12.1 in the franchise, and it relates to annexation. I've also provided you with a copy of the statute that relates to that, and I put it on your, in front of you. It's the RCW 3513-80. I've gone back and forth with Waste Management's attorney on this, and I haven't been able to reach an agreement, and I don't even think I understand the language that they'd like to have inserted in here. What I have understood from our negotiations thus far is that they originally wanted to have language in here that said that if any property was annexed to the city, then they would be allowed to serve that property for 10 years after the date of annexation, and you can see how in the statute, it talks about seven years. And when I asked them, why don't you put seven instead of 10, then I was told that Waste Management is willing to stick to the seven-year language, but that would require deletion of us giving up our right to claim damages. If the city would like to either allow 10 years of service or seven years plus measurable damages, we would be then willing to keep the right of claim, city's preference. Well, I looked at their language with regard to damages, and it appears to me that it assumes that if there is an annexation and they are allowed to serve that area only for seven years versus 10 years, they're entitled to damages. But you can see in the section that I've circled there, it says that in the event that any person, firm, or corporation whose franchise has been canceled by the terms of this section shall suffer any measurable damages as a result of any annexation, then such person, firm, or corporation shall have a right of action against the city. That tells me that if they feel they have damages, then they have a right of action, meaning they can claim damages, not that they're entitled to damages. So that's been the disagreement. And the Waste Management representative is here tonight. I've told her about the fact that this is still an unresolved issue and asked her if she'd like to speak, and she is here, maybe she wants to give the response, but I think this is basically an issue that has gone back between the, the two attorneys.
Yes. Counsel, any objections?
No, not at all.
All right, please.
I'm Laura Moser with Waste Management.
If you pull that down, so, yeah, there you go.
I'm Laura Moser with Waste Management, and I am not an attorney. I work in our public sector services group, and I do work through a lot of the terms of the contract, and my limited understanding, everything in the state of Washington is regulated either under the Utility and Transportation Commission or a franchise agreement. So any areas in an annexation that are serviced by Waste Management or any hauler that is brought into a city is a minimum of seven years plus measurable damages. And I think that that's something that's worked out between the attorneys, and it has to do with servicing it and then losing it permanently, whereas we held that before. So it's really a matter of, I guess, discussing that further with our attorneys. It's nothing unusual. We do it in every single city, and it is under, I think, the RCW code that you quoted. It's within, within that. So if there's specific language that you would like to present, I'm sure they'd be happy to look at it, and I can ask somebody to clarify that for you a little further?
Well, I'd be happy with just having section 12.1 state that any franchise rights in the event of an annexation will follow or be consistent with RCW 3513-280. I, I don't understand...
Okay, I can, I can ask for that.
...the entitlement to damages.
Okay.
So then, we're still negotiating then.
Everything else is fine.
Everything else is fine? So that would be the one point that you'd, that you'll get back to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak with the attorney in the morning, Ms. Morris, so we can, we can get back.
Um, yes. I believe this, yes, Mr. Thompson?
Would then the recommendation be to table this to our next meeting?
Yes, it would be.
Or continue this?
Yes, to continue this, right.
Do we need a motion, or can we just not take action?
Well, I don't think you need to take action tonight on this.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we didn't have a motion, so we don't, so, okay, so we're just...
It would be important for us to take action on the next meeting because the agreement will expire at the end of the month.
Or, you know, if you want to pass it with that language I just suggested, I don't know how they could lose, given that all we're asking for is that the section of the franchise read...
The same as the RCW.
...with state law.
Yes.
This could have done right.
Can we still discuss it, or are we tabling it till the next meeting?
It's up to you.
We didn't take a motion, so we're not, we're not having discussion, I don't think.
You pretty much are in charge, what you want to, how you want to do it right now.
The reason I ask is I had a couple of questions, but I can ask them later if we're just tabling it till the next meeting.
As we just wait.
Unless there are questions, then...
Well, I'd like to have them answered, but I can wait if I have to.
Well, my only point is because we do have to have it passed at our next meeting. If, if what you're going to bring up would delay it, I don't think that would be appropriate.
I think you should ask your questions now.
I'd rather ask this question now, and basically, this came about with discussions with some of my neighbors. Their understanding is that they are all required to pay for recycling, and this individual, and I'd be happy to read her letter if counsel would permit, she would like to recycle her own recyclables and not have to pay that additional fee to the city. So I'm not sure if it's in this agreement that's requiring all residents to pay for recycling, whether or not they use it, or if it's another ordinance of the city's. Maybe, you know, someone else can help answer this.
So that is the Port Orchard municipal code.
Okay.
6.04 is firing that they able to recycle whether they use it or not.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with this agreement?
Correct.
My understanding, the cost associated with the recycling, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it, it's, we get, there's a, there's a cost to it, which is, is it annually that that's adjusted?
It is adjusted annually as far as the commodity rebate or...
Yeah, commodities.
Or debit or credit.
They collect our recycling if the commodity, whatever we gather for revenue from the commodities goes against the cost to collect the commodities citywide.
Those prices have come down quite a bit, haven't they?
Certainly have.
Well, that's the macro issue, and I think the micro issue is that she's saying that because of her lifestyle, she's working three jobs, she cannot actually attend this meeting. It's a hardship for her to have to pay that, that fee that she would like to try to figure out how to save funds on. I can understand that this is not the discussion for this agreement, but she wanted to bring it up, and I thought, well, this might be an appropriate time to bring up the issue.
And, and I'd be happy, Mr. Chang, to, you know, reply to that individually if, if that would be helpful.
Thank you, Aug.
You know, Mr. Chang, another idea would be to bring it at the next council meeting and read the letter, I mean, work study, and ask the council what they would like to, you know, if they would like to...
I could read it now.
Well, it, right, you know, it's not really on the agenda, and I, you know, whatever, whatever the council's pleasure is, you know, if you want to... Mr. Clausen?
I have a question. I was under the impression that the franchise does require mandatory garbage collection, and if we want recycling, it's mandatory recycling as well.
Well, it is what you negotiate. It is what you negotiate because you adopt the ordinance requiring mandatory garbage collection or mandatory recycling, and then they have the franchise to do whatever your ordinance says. So if you change the ordinance to say you're no longer going to have recycling, then the franchise would have to change as well.
I appreciate that, but it's, it's six, one half dozen the other. I believe the history of it was that the company came to us and said, if you want recycling, then everybody has to have it. So subsequent to that, we passed the ordinance and says everybody will have it. So the ordinance, or the franchise pretty much states it. My impression was that it's either all or nothing.
Right, it reflects your, your ordinance, the franchise.
Yeah. So the ordinance came out of the franchise agreement.
So they're intertwined?
They're intertwined. You can't do one without adjusting the other, basically.
When you make changes to your ordinance, then we have to notify the franchisee so they can, you know, make adjustments.
Okay, any, any other discussion? So we're going to look into this, one provision, and you'll bring it back, or let us know what...
One more thing, and I, for those of you that weren't in the work-study session, present, the audience members, we, we kind of felt like we didn't have enough time to, to really go into this more in depth, and we will put it on the calendar for next time to do that. I think that was one of the comments, that we really didn't have much of a choice here. There's questions here about ordinances and recycling, and I'm not necessarily comfortable saying that's just the way it is without having an opportunity to adjust, but I, I think we're too late in the game. As council member Ashby already said, we, we've got one more meeting to pass this, so we won't have garbage collection in the city, so. That's my two cents.
Comments? All right, then we'll take no action on this tonight. 7C, first reading on ordinance amending 2015 budget. Mr. Martin, could you lead us into this, please? Mr. Martin, could you lead us into this, please?
Find those pesky car tabs online. Thank you. The city budget, actions involving amendments to the budget take two readings. This is the first reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number 020-14, adopting the 2015 budget. The public may comment on the amendment following its presentation. The city budget is written to capture revenue and expense over the fiscal year. During the year, changes to the budget in both revenue and expenditures need to be recognized by budget amendment. This budget amendment ordinance recognizes amendments approved by council action during the first half of the year. The budget amendment ordinance reflects the following. $19,500 from Water Sewer Fund Number 401 for continued water sewer gap analysis professional services provided by Katie Isaacs and Associates. $1,600 from Current Expense Fund 001 for additional landscape services provided by Progressive Landscapes LLC. $15,100 from Current Expense Fund 001 for the Marina Park Restroom Security Modification Project. $31,000 from Street Capital Improvement Fund Number 304 for the continuation of the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project with N.L. Olson and Associates for design documentation activities needed for the project's right-of-way phase. $4,000 transferred from Current Expense Fund Number 001 Recreation Reserve to Capital Construction Fund Numbers 302 for expenditures relating to the Paul Powers Park Entrum Improvement Plan add-ready with N.L. Olson and Associates. $5,500 from Current Expense Fund Number 001 for continued partnership with the Port of Bremerton in the construction of a covered structure located in the observation area of the Marina Park. And $13,935 to Current Expense Fund Number 001 from Washington State Parks and Recreation Commission Recreational Boating Safety Federal Financial Assistance Grant. The Council Finance Committee recommends moving the ordinance amending the 2015 budget forward for second reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Lucarelli?
I move to accept the first reading of an ordinance amending the 2015 budget for the City of Port Orchard and to direct staff to place the ordinance on the June 23, 2015 Agenda for second reading and final adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I step out of order because we should invite the citizens to come and make a comment on this. Is that correct? I think we can do it even though we've moved it and seconded discussion, so I will ask for any citizens' comments. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. I would like the comments to kind of be on these budget items that were just read into the record. Does anybody like to make a comment? All right. Thank you. There is no citizen comments, so we have a motion and a second to accept the first reading. Is there any other discussion? Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor accepting the first reading of the amending the 2015 budget? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. That motion passes and carries. Thank you very much. Okay. We'll move on to Business Item 7D, Approval of Contract with Kelly Imaging. Clerk Reinerson, are you going to lead us into this one? Okay. And I don't think your mic's, oh. There you are. Okay.
So at the 26th Council meeting, I had a call with Police and Courts Department, and at that meeting, the council determined that they were interested in knowing the purchase price of the copiers and directed staff to provide some answers to some following questions. What is the cost to purchase the 2011 Admin Finance Court Police Machines? What is the cost to incorporate a fax driver into the 2011 copy machine for the Court Admin Finance? To have the service go through the copier versus through an independent machine? And then what is the cost to purchase the machines being proposed by two bidders for the Admin Finance Court and Police Departments and to include maintenance/service contract? I have contacted the vendors and have outlined it in a spreadsheet and has been provided to you. Based on the numbers, I do understand the cost benefit of purchasing the machine. However, staff recommends approval of the lease agreement with Kelly Imaging Systems for copier services for the Admin Finance Police and Courts Department. When staff reviewed the pros and cons of leasing versus purchasing, it was determined that the leasing the copiers would be the best option for staff. I provided two motions for your consideration, and I can read the numbers to you and for the members of the public, if you're interested in knowing the purchase price of the machines.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Ashby?
Good.
Okay. Could you go ahead and read the numbers that you compiled?
Oh, yes.
Please.
Okay. So I'll start with the green section, which is the purchase of the 2011 copy machines. So the farb, can't even speak, the fair market value of the court machine, which is a Toshiba 3040C, was $3,000. And then if we wanted to include a fax board to allow fax, would be an additional $800. If we wanted to have maintenance for the rest of the year, the approximate cost would be $373.50. For the purchase price of the police Toshiba 3540 of the 2011 machine, it would be $3,500. They already have a fax, so it's not applicable. And the estimated maintenance would be $1,318.50. And then for the Admin/Finance copier, it's a Toshiba 6540, is $5,500, and to include a fax board is $800 also. And the approximate maintenance cost would be $2,403. And all of these figures do not include sales tax, so it's just the numbers plus sales tax. For the purchase price of the proposed machines, which I'm calling the 2015 machines, all of these include fax boards. So the court machine, Kelly Imaging, is $6,995. The approximate maintenance for the remainder of the year would be $313.74. The Police Department machine would be $8,725 with an approximate $1,010.94 for maintenance for the remainder of the year. Admin and Finance machine would be $13,302. For maintenance for the remainder of the year would be $1,495.62, and all of those quotes prices were provided by Kelly Imaging. So Pacific Office Automation for their recommended, or their machine for the court was $11,954 with an approximate cost of $303.30 for maintenance for the remainder of the year. Police Department was $10,889 for approximate maintenance of $1,062.30 for the remainder of the year. And for the Admin/Finance copy machine, it's $15,080 with an approximate of $1737 for maintenance for the remainder of the year. And hopefully my math is correct. I don't know if you want the total expenditures for 2015 for KellyImaging was $30,000, and total 2015 expenditures for Pacific Office Automation would be $39,000 for purchasing. I can read into the record the 2016 expenditure for maintenance and service for 2016, if you want. I can also re-give you the numbers for the three-year lease. I can just give you the total three-year expenditure for the lease for KellyImaging for all three machines is over $50,000, and for Pacific Office Automation, over $57,000, not including maintenance. And then KellyImaging maintenance, if we, over the next three years, would be $8,355.36, and Pacific Office quoted $9,670.56.
I have a point of order, just a question, and that is, is it appropriate to have a discussion before there's a motion?
Did we take a motion on that?
No, we haven't. And I wanted to know, can we discuss before we have a-
Technically, you're supposed to discuss the motion.
Okay, let's do that then.
Not even one of the ones, the two that are here. And it can get voted down, and we can just start discussions. So I'm going to move that we purchase new machines for the courts and the police, not lease, but purchase new machines for the courts and the police, and that we buy out the lease on the admin copier, have a fax board put on it, and purchase a maintenance contract on that copier. So that would be my motion for consideration.
Okay, let's say, move that we purchase new machines for-
The court and the police from KellyImaging, the $6,995, plus the maintenance of 31374, and for the police to purchase a new machine, 8725, and with maintenance of $1,010.94. And then in turn, to buy out the existing finance copier and purchase it for $5,500 and have an $800 fax board put on it. That would be my motion.
Well, for the purposes of discussion, I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
So my reasoning behind that is, if you look, other than cash flow, and Mr. Martin would, I would listen to his reasoning there, I see no reason other than cash flow to lease these copiers, and that we would get brand-new machines every three years. But we should be saving for that expenditure anyhow. It costs us $20,000 more for the same machine to lease it versus buying it. If we then in turn take the savings, if we only get two, maybe two more years out of that, the one in finance, we've saved roughly another $5,000. We've, no?
No.
By buying it?
No.
Okay, so.
I would-
Please go ahead.
I would just offer, because I have analyzed this a bit, and I will say just directly that I have, I typically have always purchased in my, in my career, I have always purchased, I have not leased, so I kind of have a focus on that. But I took, buying all three new copiers with the purchase price of the $29,022, I added 8.7% for sales tax. I took what KellyImaging had brought forward for maintenance for 2015, and then for 2016, they didn't offer maintenance for '17 or '18. However, it is a three-year contract, so I felt that maintenance needed to be included. What I did is I added 5% to the 2016, assuming there would be growth, and I added, for '18, I added another 5%. When I do those calculations, our monthly, and then I amortized it monthly over three years, and our monthly expense becomes $1,362.21. If you lease the three copiers, given the numbers that I have found in the various pieces of documentation, our monthly expense is $1,609.48. So over 36 months, we're saving $247.27 per month, or $8,901.02, or basically $3,000 a year if we purchase compared to if we leased.
Okay.
I, too, had thought about purchasing some, leasing some, doing a buy. And when I did that calculation, the numbers turn out to be the same. The savings are the same because the maintenance for buying a used machine is significantly higher than for a new machine. So I couldn't, I could not find a value in keeping, in purchasing the used machine. After I did my exercise, I also had some additional questions, and I did email our city treasurer and ask him if we could cash flow the purchase price, because that's an expense we had not counted on for this year. I also had questions for the city clerk. I asked her if the maintenance on a purchase machine differed at all from a lease machine, because that's where you see the bulk of the difference in the cost. I asked her if the numbers we were given included toner cost, because I know at home it cost me a fortune to buy the ink for my copier. I asked her if the machines that we were looking at purchasing or leasing were compatible with the city's software and our computer system, because we don't want to buy something that is a newer version than what we can support. And I also asked her if the print jobs can be directed from one department to another, because if you had one machine that was not, that was busy or not working, could you direct that to one of the other printers? And the answers I had were that the toners was included in the maintenance fee, and all of the maintenance fees are estimates. And I was told that the maintenance is exactly the same whether we purchase or whether we lease. And I was told that, yes, the printing, the print jobs can move between pieces of equipment, and that at the present time, our print drivers support these machines. Okay. So, but the news that I got that, from Mr. Martin, was he said the simple answer is, do we have, basically, it's $35,000 to do the purchase. He said the simple answer was no. So I don't know what the complicated answer was, but the simple answer was no.
You know, I might want to jump in here, too, and speak for the leases. This is my 26th, 27th year dealing with copy leases, and it seems to be revisited, I think correctly, every so many years, and we go through this calculation. There's true leases, which is an operating lease, which, that's what copy machine companies use, and then there's purchase agreements or outright purchases. The reason that I think the whole industry, all across the board in our private enterprises many times, and in public service, is to use an operating lease. Those operating leases are typically structured for the same term as the life of the equipment. So what you're doing is actually, it's kind of a pay-as-you-go situation. And on a lease, of course, we know that the company that built the copy machine gets paid off by the lease company, and there is a nominal interest amount, so they receive their money, so they get, the copy machine gets the cash upfront, and then the city is able to cash flow it. Now, the reason you use an operating lease is because it's not debt of the city then. If you used a purchase contract, it would be debt, and we'd have to carry it as debt. And so you actually use an operating lease. You can, and they're structured, you look at the fine print, you'll remember on the last leases we did, the attorney struck out some language there and initialed it, and that was to make it an operating lease rather than a purchase lease. So the only reason, I think, if we were in free enterprise, we might want to purchase them, because we would benefit by depreciation. And, of course, as a government, we don't pay the IRS, so there's no, we don't, we're not able to capture the depreciation. So generally, people tend to use the operating lease, they make it a cash flow issue. Once you sign the contract, it's automatically in the budget over that period of time because you've made a contractual obligation, and then when it expires, they pick up the machine and take it away. So that's it on the accounting side. There's all these rules with FASB and GASB that we could get into that bore you to death, but generally, this is what the whole industry's moved towards.
Mr. Martin, is sales tax have anything, do we, are we charging or collecting sales tax if we bought these machines?
You'd pay a sales tax, correct? It's a transaction if you did-
We get part of it back.
And we get part of that back.
Yeah, very small part of it, but, so that would increase it by, what is our sales tax rate?
Eight point- Eight point seven now.
Almost 9%, so there'd be a 9% additional fee there. Any other discussion or comments, questions?
So your bottom-line analysis, which was different than the spreadsheet we were given, is how much annually?
13 versus 16 a month.
The numbers I did was, it was 13, 62, 21 a month if we purchase. And it's 13, 62, and if we leased, it's 16, 09, 48. What we want to remember with, with both of those sets of numbers is that the maintenance is simply estimates, because the maintenance is based on machine usage. And we don't know what that is going to be. I just did this on the historic numbers that had been provided in our package. And as we all know, I'm a recovering banker, and so I have to go through this exercise. You know, and again, I come from the for-profit world. And I would write the check for the copiers. And I would book that as a fixed asset, and I would expense my depreciation monthly. And I would be prepared in three to four years to buy another machine. Our budgeting works a little different, and our accounting is different. I personally had to go through the exercise to find, to, to see what the difference was monetarily, economically, to the city. And then the question is, if we can't write the check for the $35,000, I didn't factor in any interest if we did a purchase contract. I'm just, you know, you write the check and you move forward. That puts a whole nother level of calculations in what I did. I also just would want to speak from the point of view of having sat in last year on the city's budget negoti, when the, every three to four years, if you purchase, you're going to have to repurchase. And you're going to have to be prepared to write that $35,000 to $40,000 check every year. And how easy would it be in the budget process to say, oh, we can let that go another year and spend the money on something else? And that's not the intent. The intent is to keep our staff working as efficiently as possible.
All right, we're still, we're still discussing and comment?
One other question, I think we discussed two, is whether we wanted, all three of these machines are on one lease. And that I see it's a $75 fee to do this contract. So if we had a problem with one machine, I guess this is a question for our attorney, would it be, be better off to have each of these machines on its own separate agreement? So if we had a problem to, doesn't affect all three, the least, the, the agreement on all three machines? I think that was one of our questions from our last session, too.
Well, and remember in our last session, I wasn't going to be able to approve this for form either. Because one of the problems with this is that the entity that you're buying from is out of state. And the provisions in here to deal with problems requires you to go out of state to deal with those, and follow the law in another state that I'm not familiar with. So you already have problems with enforcement of this agreement.
The lease agreement? That's a question.
Well, the agreement that's in this, in the packet.
Okay.
This master agreement. And I provided a memo last time, and I can go over that again with you. But Section 9 stated that the contract was governed by the internal laws of the state in which our principal business, place of business is located. And any dispute concerning this agreement would be adjudicated in a federal or state court in such state. You hereby consent to personal jurisdiction venue in such courts and waive transfer venue. So it's a problem already, just this contract. So.
I didn't think Rob's question was a technical question as much as a, in general, wouldn't it be better to have three contracts than one for the reasons he stated?
Well, if you have the, three of the same contracts, I don't see how it's going to be any different. They're all going to be the same contract, and you'll have the same problem with all three contracts. Meaning, if you end up having to enforce this contract legally, I can't do it. You'd have to hire an attorney out of state to enforce this.
I guess the general question still hasn't been answered.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If, if we have to enforce the contract, regardless whether there's three on there or one on there, it's a problem. But if we have an issue, say for example, we have a problem with the court machine, and we want to just buy out the lease, and shake hands and go away and get a different copier.
Right.
We could do that if they were individual leases. But if they were all three wrapped up in one, we would be forced to buy out all three.
Oh, okay.
Copy machines.
Okay.
That was the question.
Okay, I thought the question had to do with enforcing the contract. Okay, no, I think that it probably would be a good, good idea to get separate contracts.
I'd like to add that, you know, vendors are, are, you know, want to keep you happy. So they do a pretty good job, actually, when you lease these machines to call up. You know, they follow through and, and come right over. So, you know, we, we get good service from the vendors.
I'm just thinking for $150 to have that peace of mind that we have three agreements. It's 70, according to what I'm reading, it's $75 for each one of these agreements. So we would, you know, have three $75 documentation fees. For John's exact scenario.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I, I don't know that I can, or we have to vote it down, or?
I think you can.
Yeah, we'd have to vote it down, or you'd have to withdraw it. But I, I have a question that might deal with the lease arrangement or the document itself. Mr. Martin, are there any local leasing agencies that you're aware of that might provide a lease in the state?
I'm, I'm, I'd have, I only know of lease purchases. I don't know of a lease. But I do.
Good point.
What I would do is, like in the, in the, in the last case, several years ago, what the city did was, was change the provisions that were distasteful. And the company signed it because they wanted to put a machine in there. So I guess my point would be, if, if the choice is to lease, wouldn't we go back to the vendor and say, this is where, what the city needs, and see if they could accommodate those needs first and foremost? And then, and like I say, they, they want to lease your machines, or sell your machines. They just, they want you to have their machine. So I think maybe we'd approach them.
I would withdraw my motion and offer a motion asking that the attorney negotiate a contract that's acceptable to us, and bring it back to us.
How about you, Mr. Charles, would you?
Yeah, I'm.
You agree to that?
Yep.
All right, motion's been withdrawn. Now, what's your pleasure, Mr. Clausen?
Well, I didn't know, Jared, did you second his revised motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor.
Here's we have a contract that our attorney's not comfortable with.
I have another question, I guess it's more of a technical question, Brandy, if you could answer. Is, is the price that we're going to be essentially paying for in the lease payment is, is it cost more to lease the machine with the fax board versus one without?
To lease the machine with the fax board or without?
And let me finish, I guess, my, my thought here is, the reason for that is if in fact, these three machines are going to be tied together through the network, do we have to have all three of them with a fax board? Or can we simply go from the machine in the court and have it magically fax out of the administrative machine?
I think it depends on which, which machine.
I can't hear you.
I'm just saying legally, the court cannot fax through a different department in the court, in the building.
But everybody else could fax through your machine, then?
No.
We couldn't fax through your machine?
No, and also, we don't use our machine just for print jobs. We use them for copy, copying documents that people come out of court, and they need copies immediately, and we can't be running downstairs or other places.
No, 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 you misunderstood me, Jeff. I'm suggesting that there be a machine in all three locations. But only one of the three machines has the fax board. And for example, Brandy could go to the machine in her office and have it fax out through your machine, if you have to have a fax machine. Why do we have to have three fax boards?
We use ours constantly. It's.
So we have three fax numbers? So if we were to eliminate, you can't intertwine the fax machines with a different copier. So the, the fax machine board is embedded in the copy machine. So each machine has the ability to fax through their machine, or they have two separate units, a copy or a fax. And it's all in one station. So there may be some rewiring that would need to happen if, for example, we wanted to fax from our machine and send it out through the courts. I don't know if that's what you're asking?
Well, it is, in essence, what I heard, the response to one of Beck's questions was, can I print from my desk to any one of these copy machines? And what I thought I heard you say was yes. So in essence, you should be able to print from your desk to Debbie's machine in the court.
Correct, we can do that.
So if you can print from your desk to the court machine, can you send a fax from your desk through the court machine out the fax machine?
I don't believe so, because it's on a print driver. And that's what's allowing it to go through the network. But that'd be an IT question, I, I don't know the answer. Sorry.
If it's expensive to buy these fax boards, it's something worth looking at. If we're talking 50 bucks, it's probably not worth the time to some research.
Mr. Cartwright, you had, excuse me, he had his hand up. Go ahead.
Assuming in Beck's math is correct, and I don't doubt that it is, we're looking at $247 a month potential savings, which is, what, 22 workdays in a month? What I, what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing, and this isn't the second time we've dealt with copiers, is a strong desire from staff to lease the machines. And lease them the way and configure the way that they'd like them for their work. And at a cost of 11 bucks a day, where they're going to feel that it's the most efficient way to get their work done, and, and keep the court separate, as I think most of those documents probably do need to be. For me, the question is whether or not we can get an agreement that the attorney's comfortable with on a lease. I hate leaving three grand a year out there. But when you break it down to a dollar per day type of environment, 11 bucks a day, so staff feels that it's more, more efficient, I, I, I'm not going to argue over, over lease or purchase at this point. I just think that, they've done the analysis, they know what they want. And so I, I would support a lease if we can get. And I think that's the motion that you put, and so I'm going to support that.
Ms. Hesby.
Well, I was just going to go back to the one versus three contracts. And I'm remembering that the city clerk had told us that we used to have three contracts, but we merged them into one for accounting purposes. That it became easier for the accounts receivable, or payable department to, to pay the bills.
That was a request from the last city clerk. So it's, we're indifferent. We're paying so many bills for you now, I don't think that two more.
Two more isn't going to.
You're flooding us out.
A needle much, yeah. So it kind of almost sounds like we're, we need to get that question answered about the contract first, and find out if.
I thought we made a motion to bring, for the attorney to negotiate a contract that is acceptable to the city.
I didn't catch a motion, I don't think.
And he seconded it. When I withdrew my other motion, I made a motion to.
Oh, okay.
If that was to bring back for council consideration, or once the attorney is satisfied, we move forward?
I'm indifferent.
Does that mean we're going to three contracts?
I, I, I believe we should. So I, maybe I should restate the, the motion.
Yeah, why don't you state it?
And clarify, clarify it. So the motion is to lease the three copiers as presented. The preference would be to have three contracts, and the contracts to be in a format acceptable to the city attorney and brought back before us.
Okay.
Okay.
I would just, do you want to add KellyImaging, rather than, so that there's clarification?
The lowest bidder, which was KellyImaging. Was our lowest responsible bidder.
Question? It's acceptable to the city attorney, why would you bring it back? Why don't you just have him sign it?
Excuse me, did I say to bring it back?
Yes.
I'm, I, erred. I don't want it, I don't want it brought back, I'm sorry.
So it is to, it, the motion is to lease three copiers as presented if our attorney can, can hammer out the, the contract, the three contracts to her satisfaction.
Yes.
With KellyImaging.
With Kelly.
Yes, with KellyImaging, okay. So we have a motion and a second, and we're open for discussion. Mr. Chan? I see no discussion, no hands up, so we're going to be voting on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, nay?
Thank you very much.
We're on the discussion item, or I mean, we're on Business Item 7E, Discussion Kitsap County Buildable Lands. Mr. Bond, could you tell us about this one, please?
I think Brandy's going to hand out a memo that we put together.
Okay.
At the last minute here. The issue here, at previous work-study meetings, we presented the findings of the Buildable Lands report prepared by Kitsap County. And in the report, the county found that the city had a capacity for 12,184 additional residents and 5,569 additional jobs. Recently, the city contract, our contact to the county concerning this report trying to break down land capacity by sewer basin to assist with the city's update to the sewer system plan. While assisting the city with this analysis, the county discovered an error in their previously released report concerning residential capacity. In order to, in determining how to correct the error, the, the county realized that two alternatives existed for assessing buildable lands capacity. The first alternative is to assess the city's buildable lands capacity using the maximum density allowed in an underlying zone. This would mean that a buildable, that the buildable portions of a property zoned R12 would have a capacity based on the maximum of 12 units per acre, even though development within the zone is allowed and has been observed at lower densities. For R4.5, the report would assume the maximum build out of 4.5 units per acre. The second alternative would be to assume achieved densities to determine the city's development capacity. This alternative involves reviewing recent subdivision and construction data for each zone from 2006 to 2012 to determine on average what development densities are being achieved in particular zones. In this case, the observed development densities in the R12 zone have been 7.415 units per acre, well under the allowed density of 12 units per acre. Applying this methodology would reduce the city's population capacity from 12,184 to 10,358. The report would still indicate that the city has enough capacity to accommodate its expected growth of 800, or 8,235, but the city would have less surplus capacity on paper. And I provided a table showing the achieved densities, and we have not had development in all of the zones in the last, or in that six-year period. Anyway, the county has advocated for the achieved density versus the maximum density because it affects the countywide land capacity, which has been an issue that they've had to deal with over previous comprehensive land updates at the county. Anyway, we don't have to decide this tonight. I'm planning on putting this on the work-study agenda, and I just wanted to provide you the information today so that you can think about it, because we do need to provide the county some direction by the 15th. So at our next work-study, we'll discuss this, and I need direction from council on which of the two alternatives you'd like to take. And I'd encourage you to talk to, you know, any stakeholders that you know of that might be interested in this, and see what they have to say. And there are, and, and we're going to continue to assess the legal ramifications. And we're going to continue to assess the legal ramifications of either alternative to make sure that we're not taking on any additional risk. And we'll have a recommendation for you at next week's meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Bond from the council?
How would that impact? Because I know when we do our comprehensive plan update, we have to account for that popular... That growth. So having... We're still planning for the 8,235.
Yeah, we're required to plan for that because that's our allocated growth.
Correct, okay.
And so...
That answered my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda, item 7F, discussion of wayfinding system. And Ms. Ashby, you want to tell us what you have in mind on that?
Yes. I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion, and then we can... If it's seconded, we can have a discussion. But I move to grant permission for use of the city's wayfinding mark when the mark is placed in advertisements which promote an event authorized by the city of Port Orchard to the city's partners who... And to the city's partners who are awarded LTAC funds.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, as read into the record. I won't try to repeat every word, but I think... Is there any questions? Any comments or any...
Just as if people want to know what we're talking about is, we have a new wayfinding mark, and we have... I do. And I think, Mr. Bond, it's up on the screen. This will be in our wayfinding signage when we get it going. But in the meantime, we have partners that put events on downtown, that do advertising out of the area, and they would like to be able to use this mark in some of their advertising. And we don't have a policy yet. And at economic development on Monday, it was determined that we're a few months from having a policy. And so I was just hoping to grant people or organizations that we already have a relationship with the ability to use this mark.
Just wanted to ask for clarification on that. Is that for agencies that have received LTAC funds in that particular year or in past years?
I could amend that to say that we're awarded LTAC funds in 2015.
Okay. So...
Oh, right. Well, we hope to have a policy.
Yeah.
And so that... Right. This is just to allow...
This is a bridge to get us to when we have a policy.
Right.
And which will probably do effectively the same thing, allowing us to allow the use of it. But this kind of gets us there right away on a temporary basis. Okay? Any other comments? The other discussion, being none, we're going to be voting on Ms. Ashby's motion. And if it's all right with the council, I won't try to repeat the motion, but we have it on record. So we have a motion. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carried. Okay, that's the end of our business items. We're at the portion of reports of the council committees. We'll start and just go right down the list. Mr. Clausen?
Well, the finance committee met the other day. We went over the budget amendment that we passed the first reading of and approved that moving forward for recommendation to approve, as you heard. We also received a report from the treasurer that our sales tax receipts have come in better than anticipated. I don't know, Mr. Martin, if you have those numbers. I unfortunately left them in my car. And also, the real estate excise tax is also coming in better than we'd anticipated. So from a revenue side standpoint, it looks good. And from the expenditure side, everything looked normal. So I'm working from memory. I don't know if Gary or Bob, you had anything else you wanted to add?
The month was an outlier, very positive, but year-to-date, we were just about right on the mark at 1.2 percent.
Yeah, for the year, yeah.
Ahead of plan. So it's pretty much right on this right of mark.
Actually, on another subject, I have a kind of an issue going at home. I've been monitoring my phone, and I would like to sneak out just a little bit early if the council will concur and go take care of something I think I need to do.
I move to excuse Councilmember Childs.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here.
And I guess the last thing I would add, it shows that the next committee meeting is to be determined. And actually, we agreed that we were going to meet on the 14th at 5:30 here before the council meeting.
Was it 5:00 or 5:30?
I have it as 5:30, so...
On the 14th?
On the 14th, just prior to a council meeting.
That's right.
So the clerk could conclude that?
Of July, correct?
Of July, yes.
Okay, economic development. Is that all, Mr. Clausen?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Economic development, tourism, and Ms. Ashby?
Yes, we met on Monday, and our first item of discussion was the responses to our RFP for the event toolkit. And we will be bringing forth a recommendation for approval at the next council meeting. And then we discussed our wayfinding system. And we are still working with Ambrosini Design, working on the engineering bid specifications. I believe Mark's still been in conversations with Mr. Ambrosini. The other thing we talked about was use of the mark, which we took action on this evening. We had a brief discussion on our special events ordinance update, and the city clerk indicated that she hoped to have that coming to our committee in September and that it should be completed by the end of the year. We had got an update on the My Sidewalk social media platform, and it continues to be problematic. And the economic development department is working on a resolution for that. The other thing that we discussed just briefly was the foot ferry extended hours. That was our meeting, and we will be meeting again on the second Monday of July. And we are not going to be meeting in August. And that's just for the public, for your awareness. We'll be meeting the second Monday in July, and then not convening again until the second Monday in September.
Okay, thank you. Utilities, sue advisory, Mr. Patonson?
The sue advisory meets next Wednesday, and utilities meets next Thursday. So we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you. Public property, Mr. Cartwright?
Thank you. We met on Monday. Our first discussion point was special event art walk signs. There was a prototype brought in, basically to stick in the flowerpots. We were concerned that they'd be too easily removed, not quite the look that we wanted to some flowerpots. So it looks like they're going to... Still working on it, hopefully to hang on the outside of the posts on the marquee that will be high enough, that won't be a safety issue for cars or bicyclists or anything. So we're going to keep getting some information back on that, and that's ongoing. There was a citizen proposal to officially rename the Bethel South Park property, which is across the street from Fred Meyer. It's an approximately five-acre parcel that was donated to the city for intended use as a public park, to rename that officially as Tripp Park, the family that donated that. So you'll be seeing that coming forward. Previously, there was a request from the church at Sydney and Kitsap to install permanent Sunday-only disabled signs in front of the... In front of their building. And staff went out, and it's not ADA accessible, so it would require significant street improvements. The grade's too great for us to legally mark those as an ADA stop. So they talked to the church, and they understood, and that kind of issue just fizzled away. There was a discussion on use of Bay Street by merchants, and our understanding is, as we know it now, is Attorney Morris has been drafting a public property right-of-way use ordinance, and public property will be reviewing that and discussing that further. We discussed first draft of the Parks Survey, which is going to be, I believe, Nick, a Google-based survey. And had some input on that. Maybe we should first ask some ideas and then kind of narrow that down. Survey was a little bit too broad to begin with. We will not meet... Public property will not meet in August. Our next meeting will be July 13th, and then the second Monday in September. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Lodging tax advisory, Mr. Chang?
Nothing to report.
Festival chimes and lights, Ms. Lucarelli?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Just announcement, the work-study session will be next Tuesday, June 15th, 7:00 p.m. right here. We're also moving closer and closer to a town hall meeting that's July 16th at 6:30 in this chamber. And we are still moving ahead on the 125th city anniversary. Committee is doing lots and lots of interesting things, and it's starting to look like it's going to be the whole weekend rather than just a single day. So of activities at least. So it's going to be a lot of fun. And that's, of course, September 5th. So it's a ways away yet, but there's a lot of planning that has to go into that. So the committee's really working hard on that. And that was the beginning of my report also. I went to the graduation for the South Kitsap Alternative High School last night. And what a great, great bunch of young people that are there. And most every one of them, you know, said that if it hadn't been for this opportunity, they may not have gotten their degree or, you know, graduated from high school. So it's... There was about 135 there, and there were several that didn't come. So anyway, it was... I was very pleased to be there and congratulate all these young people that live in the South Kitsap area. So I won't go into any more report at this time, but I'd like to move into the reports of department heads. Mr. Dorsey, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I plan to give an update on 10 projects tonight, but I think I'll yield the floor to my fellow coworkers.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Thank you very much. I'd like to take just a few minutes tonight and actually give a... I was requested by Chairman Clausen of the Finance Committee to actually walk through a treasurer's report. And so I have put that together. So I would like to take five minutes. Usually, this is the comedy hour, of course, and I think of something funny. But tonight, we have some serious business, and I'd like to do this. And then when I'm finished, Nick's going to actually address fees that he's collecting in his department. But first of all, I'd like to mention to you that the 2014 annual report, which is required to be filed with the state 150 days after the close of the fiscal year, has gone to the state of Washington. This is your financial booklet. I think you found one in your inbox. What I would encourage you to do is read the management discussion and analysis, the narrative part. That is the written part that follows through on all of those issues that you would find if you followed through the various funds, where you'd find the facts that we're actually pointing out to the public. We would never borrow money. We're saying that to the people that would loan us the money. We're also making those comments to the state auditor. The state auditor will start out this year on the 2014 budget by first reading all of the city council's minutes. And once they complete that, then they pick up this booklet, and they follow through the different financial transactions and budget comments that they picked up in that piece of work. I would point out that there are, if you see any kind of reductions in between 2013 and a comparable in 2014, what that's going to be is depreciation, which is the largest amount of impact you have on your budget. And then less federal grant activity that we had in 2015 over 2014. So if you actually followed through some of the different fund statements, you're going to see those reductions, and that is the main driver there. Revenues ended the year ahead of the budget in 2014, 1.9 percent, and expenditures were 92.4 percent of the amended budget at the end of the year. Put it another way, revenue was up 2 percent, and expenditures were 7 percent below budget. And that keeps with the councils and cities' policy where you estimate revenues low and your expenses high, and it serves the city well. And I also point out that copy machines are found on page 51. So to continue on, I would point to folks that the... If you go to the Port Orchard City website, if you go to Finance and go to Publications, there you'll find a list of current documents that we work very hard to keep up to date. We do get inquiries from everything, from students that are looking at government and the cost of government, to inquiries by business, people looking for transparency and that type of thing. So we have a fairly robust, I think, request for information. So we try to... We do keep that current there. And as you know, if you've been there, you'll find listed the Port Orchard financial policies as the first document. The 2015 budget, the transportation funding report that we wrote is actually posted there with good information. We do include the 2015 preliminary budget worksheets and the 2015 revenue sources presentation that you remember that we had in October. And of course, that's what based the 2015 budget on. We do include a quarterly budget recap that captures the information. We do that consistently, and then I write a narrative that follows through on that. And then we also include the 2014 annual budget report, the final... And then the most recent state auditor's report is also mentioned there. So with that, I would say that... I'll just hold it up here. This is... Some of you have seen this. We go over this at the council finance committee each quarter. And this is the city of Port Orchard quarterly report that's printed on the website. And I'll just mention for the first quarter, revenue in the first quarter fell within expectations and followed historical collection patterns. Sales tax in the first quarter was ever so slightly, but not significantly, down at less than 1 percent, which was $6,000. That's actually come back, as Chairman Clausen had mentioned, we're now actually at 1.47 percent, and we're positive for that. Collections among the other general fund revenues have been coming in very close, but slightly ahead of budget estimates approved in the 2015 budget last December. You'll notice in this document that the general fund revenues, which are your... You may remember would be property tax, sales tax, utility tax, admissions tax, gambling tax, and other taxes, are actually... The percentage of collection in the first quarter was 18.2 percent. And you might say, well, why wasn't it 25 percent if a quarter percent of the year had gone by? That's because, of course, property tax is collected later on at the end of April. And so there's other licenses, permits, and other charges, and those two came in at 18.1 percent. And basically, that's caused due to the construction season that we're just coming into. So interestingly enough, those two came in at the same time. I would mention that something of interest would be utility tax revenues, which we collect. And of course, there's various ones, but the two that I'd point out tonight was electrical. It's actually down $30,000 year-over-year. And interestingly enough, gas also is down, the tax on that $30,000 for the year, and that's due to the mild weather through the winter. All expenditure categories out of those addressed in tonight's budget amendment are within historical ranges experienced in the first quarter of each year. So we're positive in that regard. And if we take general fund expenditures, those have run at 18.1 percent so far in the first quarter. And of course, I just mentioned that revenue was at 18.1 percent. So if somebody wants to take credit for that, or if it's a fluke, I'd suggest you take credit for it. And with that, I would mention finally that the one issue that the council should be aware of, because I think it's all positive, I think we have to keep in mind that the... As the Finance Committee is aware, that our prisoner boarding and monitoring budget, at this point of the year, we've expended 49 percent of the total budget... at this point of the year, we've expended 49% of the total budget, even though, and I'm talking about now, as of June 1st. We've expended 49% of the budget, and we're not halfway through the year. Now, that's further impact, I'd caution you, because our additional bed days under our contract are billed in arrears by the county, so we're actually two months behind in that, and they seem to be running about $20,000 more a year. So, we're going to have to continue to keep our eye on those different categories of prisoner boarding, and that is the Kitsap County Corrections costs for jail there, it includes the Forks prisoner boarding, it includes prisoner expenses that are occasional, medical. We did have a large charge there, we're actually $29,000 over budget for prisoner medical, and then, community service is slightly, which is your community service piece of it, is at about 40%, so it's the one positive piece. So, we've expended 49% of that. So, I just point that out as something that we need to keep in mind. Bed days are above average and year-over-year, and the trend is up on incarcerations. So, with that, that's the Treasurers' report, and I'd like to thank you all and turn it over to Nick, who's gonna speak specifically to the fees in his department.
Well, Mr. Martin, before we turn it over to Nick, I'd like to thank you and commend you for your hard work a year ago, almost, or a little bit, you know, when you were making all your estimates, you know, you got it, you pretty much nailed it year after year, but this was really close. Would you say one point something on your estimated income? And you're tracking really, really well, so I appreciate that. And I want to mention too, like you said, this jail bill is nothing we can basically have much control over, because it's a bill from the county, and when they pay or when they charge and all that is pretty much up to them. It's too bad, but it makes it really difficult for your job to keep track of that, so, thank you. Mr. Bond?
All right, thank you. To follow up on Alan's report, I've noticed that we've been really busy lately, and so I took it upon myself to find out exactly how busy we've been by running some reports on Friday, and sure enough, the good news is that through June 1st of this year, we've already had 40 new single-family housing starts compared to 52 for all of last year, and so I think that probably factors in at least somewhat to increases in REIT and some of the building permit revenue. We are on pace to exceed revenue forecasts for both building permits and plan check fees for the year, as well as land use and zoning permits, and so all of those things, if things stay as they are now, should come in a little above what was budgeted for the year. We also have, in addition to the single-family starts, we do have one large commercial project, which is in permitting review, and I would expect that that's gonna be issued here in the next 30 days, and will be a sizable permit. The bad news with all of that workload is that we are falling behind on our plan review timelines, and so we're currently maintaining six weeks for building plan review, which means that from the time you submit an application, it's gonna be about six weeks before you can pick up a permit. We've actually taken the step of having our consultant cover us one day a week for inspection so that the building inspector can do nothing but plan review, and that's only allowing us to maintain our current timeline. We haven't really eaten into the backlog, but we are treading water, so to say. And also, on the planning side of things, we are going to, our intern Scott, if you see him, congratulate him, I think he has successfully defended his master's thesis now, and so he's gonna be helping us out with a little bit of extra, a few extra hours until things slow down a little bit. So, finally, my other item that I wanted to present tonight, or just remind council of, it works study next week, we're also gonna discuss concurrency and impact fees, and so the binder that was handed out in May's meeting, if you would remember to bring that with you, will give you some supplemental information, but we don't want to have to reprint the 70 or 80 pages of copies there. I'll have a couple of extra copies on hand, but remember to review that and be prepared for a discussion. Thanks.
You know, and Mr. Bond, I'd like to thank you and your staff over there, because along with all of the work you've been doing, it looks to me like it's almost a 50 or 100% increase in building permits. If it continues for the rest of this year, it'll be 80 or 90 as opposed to, you know, so anyway, it's, that's huge in itself, but then you've also been working through replacing an employee, and I don't know if you've told the council about the new employee that you found, but mention that too, if you...
Yeah, yeah. We have hired a new code enforcement officer, and we'll be bringing forward a resolution to commission him. He came with 17 years' experience as a code enforcement officer, and seems like he's got a great personality for the position, a lot of experience, and I think he's gonna really help us sort of move the whole department forward in our approach to code enforcement and really modernize our code. So, yeah, next meeting, or in the second meeting in June, we'll bring a resolution to commission him as an officer.
Oh, thank you. Good work, yes. Ms. Morris, do you have a report?
I'll report.
Clerk Reiterson, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I have a few things.
Okay.
So, next week, or at the next meeting, I'll be bringing forward a bid result for the official newspaper, so we went out for bid last month and received one bid, so I'll present that to you next council meeting for your consideration. The other thing is, I think we're getting close to having the mayor provide a recommendation to the council to appoint the Lodging Tax Committee members, so what we were holding up on is the hoteliers. So, depending on the number of hoteliers, bed and breakfast that we'll commit, is how many nonprofits or the people that can receive the funding, how many we can appoint those. They have to be even numbers. So, I think it's looking that we'll probably have a member, a committee member of six, so three hoteliers and three nonprofits, so, but I will be working with the chair this week to get that finalized, to bring it before the council at the next council meeting. And then, the other thing is, when you thought you were done finalizing a franchise agreement for waste management, you will be, I think, will be going to the Utilities Committee in June for the Puget Sound Energy Franchise Agreement. So, we took your comments wisely, and we're, in June will be one year before the franchise agreement will expire, so that'll be on your guys' agenda, I believe, in June. The other comment is that I'm at the finalizing stage of preparing for the council a claims management report, so I kind of mentioned a couple meetings ago that we're, I'm drafting up a policy, so I thought I'd be interested for the council to know the amount of claims that we receive on a monthly basis, yearly basis, and you'll get that report. It's not so much the number of claims that we receive on a monthly or daily basis, you might find interesting the amount of dollars that either have been paid out or have denied. Some of them it's internally, some of it goes through our insurance carrier to handle, so I'm hoping to get that out to you by the first part of July, for you guys to look at the last couple of years of history, because I don't think that you guys have ever presented that, so I'm gonna provide that to you. So, any of the items that I've discussed, I think all the other department directors have the same policy, and so does I, so do I. If you have any questions about any of the things that I present, please ask me, I'd be happy to help, and if I can't, I'll get the answer for you, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to give a report on the KRCC meeting.
Okay, please.
We did have a KRCC meeting on June 2nd, and the good news is we heard transportation reports, and the primary one, because it is getting late, is the PSRC Committee that is putting together the criteria for the next funding cycle, did recommend to keep the Kitsap County set aside, and that is very important to our region for our federal transportation dollars. The other thing that I really wanted to mention this evening was that there will be a reception honoring Mary McClure and McClure Consulting on June 29th at 5:00 p.m. at the John Horsley Island Lake Center. Mary has headed, been the executive director, her consulting firm has been the administration of KRCC since, I believe, about 1999. It's been a long tenure, and she's done a very good job for the organization. There will also be a KRCC retreat on June 28th. It will, it also will be at the Island Lake Center, and the time for that is yet to be determined, but I wanted to make sure everyone know that they're invited to the reception honoring Mary McClure.
Thank you. And Mr. Cartwright, I didn't ask if you had a report from any, does anybody else have a report? All right. I'm sorry, Ms. Ashby, I just skipped right over that.
I just wanted to make sure we got the invitation out for Mary.
Good, good, thank you. We're at Citizens Comment portion, so if you'd raise your hand, please.
Thank you, Mayor Robert Parker, again. I'd like to make a little bit of a comment. When we're thinking about all of our hats that we wear in our different organizations, and, you know, we have KRCC, we have Kitsap Transit and all that, I'd like you to think about when you put your Kitsap Transit hat on, about the things that we're taxing Kitsap Transit with, and the things that should be really important. I read one of the minutes over the last year that, from the Kitsap Transit Board, where they came out and they said that bringing back the Sunday service wasn't part of the six-year plan. Well, I'd like to submit back to you that poor people aren't poor six days a week, they're poor seven days a week. We can make some hard choices and tell people that can't afford transportation, a lot of us are fortunate, so we take it for granted, but some of those people are walking on Sunday when they should be bussing. If they're down here and they're feeling ill, what do we do with someone who's poor on Sunday and needs to go to the hospital? We can, I guess we can, as taxpayers, we can fund ambulances, or they could get on a bus on Sunday. And there's some things, you know, when we're looking at things like passenger-only ferries and foot ferries and buying all these double-decker buses, I think what we've forgotten are the poor people of this county, and that should be most important to us. We're building facilities to take care of their mental health issues, take care of all their medical issues. We've got agencies everywhere to try and take care of these people. We need to give them transportation so that they can get there. If you really want it to come home to roost, and I challenged one of the councilmen in Bremerton to actually do it, and he still hasn't done it, that is also on the Kitsap Transit Board. Some of our people that are poor, they get into legal troubles. Get on a bus in Pauls Bow and try and make a court appearance down here in Kitsap County, and try and make it back, and you tell me how long it took you. You might as well say you're done for the day. We need to really start looking at how do we transport our poor people. If we can't do it on buses on Sunday, get those vans that are parked out there in the lot somewhere, something. But our people are poor seven days a week, not six. We can put in fancy hydroplane boats or whatever, or we can take care of our poor people. I hope you make the choices towards our poor. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Last chance. All right, I'll entertain a motion, well, wait a minute, no, I won't either, I'm sorry. We do have an executive session, and...
On potential litigation for 10 minutes?
And we anticipate no action will be taken when we return, but we will return and adjourn the meeting when we come back, so...